The first public hearing of the House Committee investigating the January 6th attack on the Capitol is an hour away. Seven Democrats and two Republicans lay out the evidence. The never-before-seen video of the coordinated attack on the American democratic process. New witnesses and testimony about that day and the attack for the public to see. The investigation, one year in the making. Yet another mass shooting to report tonight. This one in Smithsburg, Maryland, about 90 minutes from Washington, D.C. A gunman opened fire at a business. Authorities confirm multiple victims. ABC's Pierre Thomas has the latest. In Michigan, the decision to indict a police officer for murder for killing an unarmed black man after a traffic stop last April. ABC's Alex Perez speaks with the man's father in Grand Rapids.
I'm asking them to don't get tired, to don't give up.
For the first time, we see surveillance video of the University of Missouri hazing incident that left a young man with permanent brain damage. ABC's Will Reeve talks with his family. And I talk with Ms. Marvel herself. The star of the new Disney show, Iman Vellani, shares her thoughts about going from being a Marvel Comics fan to the brand's first Muslim superhero.
The sheer amount of love that I've received and the response. Girls were coming up to me crying, saying that this is the best representation they've gotten.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lindsay Davis. Thank you so much for streaming with us. We are tracking a workplace shooting tonight and major developments in the investigation into the Uvalde mass shooting. But we do begin in Washington, where 18 months after our democracy was tested, we are on the verge of witnessing a defining moment in American history. In less than an hour, the House Committee, which has spent months looking into what happened during the insurrection at the U.S. Capitol, will begin presenting what they found, what they describe as significant new information, including never-before-seen video obtained by ABC News from a documentarian who was embedded with the Proud Boys that day. It provides a shocking new glimpse into those tense hours. The committee has also interviewed more than 1,000 people connected to January 6th, including depositions from former President Trump's inner circle, among them, his daughter Ivanka Trump. How much will we learn tonight about their actions behind the scenes leading up to the insurrection? We have you covered tonight on ABC News Live, and we'll bring you every minute from gavel to gavel of tonight's hearing. Our chief Washington correspondent Jonathan Karl leads us off tonight with what to expect.
Tonight, the January 6th Committee will present dramatic, never-before-seen video of January 6th, some of it seen here on ABC News for the first time. The so-called QAnon shaman rallying the crowd with lies about the election.
Every real American knows that this election was a fraud. Everybody knows there's fraud all throughout the election. And anybody that denies that is an idiot.
The man behind the camera will be tonight's lead witness, documentary filmmaker Nick Quested, who was embedded with the Proud Boys as they and others marched on the Capitol.
For anyone that really didn't think that there was extreme violence on that day, I filmed it, I saw it, and was subject to it. The violence was real, and it was exceptionally powerful.
You can't watch that and think it was just another visit. A tourist visit to the Capitol.
No, when you see two people die on one day, it's not normal political discourse.
Quested and his crew were so close to the action, he was initially considered a suspect by the FBI.
It's gonna be fun. I am not allowed to say what's going to happen today because everyone's just gonna have to watch for themselves. But it's gonna happen. Something's gonna happen, one way or the other.
His camera was rolling as a rioter was pushed off the balcony, capturing this man with blood streaming down his face as the mob broke into the Capitol.
We have stormed the Capitol. It has been breached.
And inside the Capitol. His crew there as the mob searched for Nancy Pelosi. This video outside Speaker Pelosi's office was shot just minutes after she was evacuated from the Capitol. Justice Department prosecutors recently used some of Quested's video. This footage of Proud Boys leader Enrique Tarrio as he was released from prison on the eve of the riot, meeting with another militant leader, Stuart Rhodes of the Oath Keepers. In an underground parking garage on Capitol Hill the night before the attack. In the days after the attack, Republican leader Kevin McCarthy said clearly that Trump bore responsibility for what happened on January 6th, saying at the time.
The president bears responsibility for Wednesday's attack on Congress by mob rioters. He should have immediately denounced the mob when he saw what was unfolding.
Today, McCarthy was asked if he still believes that former President Trump bears responsibility.
I thought everybody in the country bared some responsibility.
And on the big question that animated the attack on the Capitol.
Do you believe that Donald Trump is just flat wrong when he says the election was stolen?
Look, we've answered this question a long time. Joe Biden is the president. I think you can look that there's a lot of problems still with the election process.
But that wasn't my question. That wasn't my question. I mean, we know he's the president. He lives in the White House. Was it legitimate? Is Donald Trump wrong when he says the election was stolen?
You know, Jonathan, we've talked about this a long time. I've already answered that question.
What was the answer? Is Donald Trump wrong when he says the election was stolen?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So you won't answer that?
Jonathan, I've answered it numerous times. I know you have a microphone. I know what you want to do. I've already answered the question.
I just want to know, is he wrong when he says the election was stolen?
Thank you for your time.
Jonathan Karl joins us now. John, you gave it your best shot. He just would not answer that question. We, of course, just heard that exchange there with Kevin McCarthy. We've heard audio tapes of McCarthy condemning what Trump did on January 6th. What a really remarkable turn of events here. What do you make of this about-face, really?
You know, it really says something about Trump's continued power on the party. During that week and a little more than a week after January 6th, McCarthy was forthright both privately and in public that Donald Trump was the bore responsibility, significant responsibility, for the attack on the Capitol. He called on him to acknowledge that. He pushed back when others suggested it wasn't really Trump supporters that did this and the various conspiracy theories. But I think that he's just realized that if he wants to be Speaker of the House, which he, of course, wants to be, that he needs to be not at odds with Donald Trump. And I think it's as simple as that.
And, John, the hearing gets underway less than an hour from now. You've, of course, got that exclusive access to never-before-seen video from the documentarian who will testify shortly. What struck you the most about this glimpse that you saw as far as what happened that day?
Well, first of all, watching that footage, which was so professionally shot and so close to the action, again, it's remarkable that he was so close that the FBI actually thought he was essentially a suspect, a criminal, part of the invading force, because he was right there with them all as it all went down. So there's a rawness to it and a closeness to it and a real look at the Proud Boys. And we're gonna see a lot more. I was only able to show you a little bit of it. He turned over hours of that footage. But I think that beyond that, what's gonna be significant to look at here are excerpts of the taped depositions. Remember, the committee has interviewed about 1,000 witnesses, many of them very close to Donald Trump, including members of his family. You're gonna hear, I'm told, from at least 10 different witnesses who testified over the previous several months behind closed doors, you're gonna hear excerpts of the testimony, and you'll hear excerpts of interviews under oath with members of the Trump family that this committee believes backs up their case that Trump was responsible for what happened.
All right, Jonathan Karl, our thanks to you. We'll be watching along with you tonight.
Thank you, Lindsay.
A Republican candidate for governor of Michigan has now been charged in the January 6th attack on the U.S. Capitol. The FBI arrested Ryan Kelly at his home outside Grand Rapids earlier. This comes less than two months before Michigan's Republican primary. Federal authorities say they received tips, videos, and images showing him during the January 6th riot. He faces misdemeanor charges, including disorderly conduct. The arrest is, of course, just hours ahead of the high-profile first public hearing on January 6th. Joining us now for more is Michigan Democratic Representative Debbie Dingell. Congresswoman, we thank you so much for your time tonight. I have to assume that you'll be watching the hearings. Is there anything in particular that you think that you'll be focused on when you watch?
Well, I think it's really important that the American people know this is a strong bipartisan effort to get to the facts of what happened on January 6th and that the American people understand the pre-plotted that occurred. I'm very aware some people just came to the Capitol that day because they wanted to have their voices heard, but we want to see the facts about how some people did come to the Hill. I've heard from people, some people came prepared to kill, and people came with intent of overturning the results of an election.
And take us back to the House floor that day, as you and your colleagues were quickly ushered out now 18 months later. What sticks out to you most from that day?
You know, I, that day, was on the House floor. I'd actually been asked by leadership to go to the mic and try to keep people calm. And it was never in my head that what was happening was happening until you heard the noise, you smelled the tear gas, you heard the violence. And I was afraid for our democracy that day, and I'm still afraid for our democracy today.
You said you were afraid for democracy. Were you ever, at any time, afraid for your life?
I know that there were other people that were, but it just, it didn't, I should have been afraid, and I wasn't afraid. I was more afraid for our country that day.
And former President Trump just today called January 6th, quote, "the greatest movement in the history of our country." And as time has gone on, some of your colleagues have really started to whitewash what happened that day. Just today, Minority Leader McCarthy refused to acknowledge President Biden won the 2020 election. Does it cross your mind that this could happen again?
I'm very worried about the 2024 election. I believe that the most fundamental principle, fundamental thing we have is our vote and that people have to have, know that their vote matter and that on election day, we elect the person we want to represent us. And I believe that there are people that are trying to undermine people's confidence in the election process. They have successfully undermined people's confidence in the election process. And if that is where we are, our democracy could collapse. I'm very worried about 2024. We already know, we know they're trying to disrupt the elections in Michigan in 2022.
And you just brought up Michigan. I mean, it really seems to be at the center of a disturbing movement. That plot, of course, to kidnap Governor Whitmer was thwarted, but your office has even been vandalized and broken into. You've seen armed men outside of your home, and you've shared a threatening voicemail where someone said, "I hope your family dies in front of you." How concerned are you for your own safety at this point and other elected officials in your state?
You know, I'm worried about any elected official. What happened outside of the home of Justice Kavanaugh, our Supreme Court, whether I do agree with them or not, should be safe. What you're seeing is happening at school board meetings across the country. It's happening to mayors. We need to take a deep breath and worry about what's happening in our country. The fear and division that we are seeing is destroying the fundamental roots of our democracy.
And as you know, the FBI just today arrested Ryan Kelly, who's vying to be the GOP nominee for governor in your state. He was at the Capitol on January 6th but denies going in recently. He was leading in the polls. In your mind, should he drop out of the race?
I think that the people of Michigan should hold him accountable, know what the facts are, and really reflect upon who they want to represent them, or in this case, it's governor, who they want to run the state of Michigan.
Okay, fair enough. Representative Debbie Dingell, we thank you so much for your time tonight. Really appreciate you joining us.
Thank you.
Another deadly mass shooting to report today. This time, it happened at a business, Columbia Machine Incorporated in Smithsburg, Maryland, about 90 minutes west of Washington, D.C. At least three people were killed, one person injured at the manufacturing plant. ABC's chief justice correspondent Pierre Thomas has the latest on the investigation.
Tonight, this high-speed pursuit by state police near Smithsburg, Maryland, ending in a showdown with a suspected gunman in another mass shooting.
Is there somebody running from the cops?
You can hear the volley of rapid gunfire.
Holy [bleep]. Shot fired! Turn around!
The state police responded, pursued the suspect. Suspect fired and shot state trooper in the shoulder, who then returned fire and shot him back.
It all started around 2:30 this afternoon with reports of an active shooter at the Columbia Machine Manufacturing Plant about 75 miles west of Baltimore.
Gunshot victim. Police are in route. Being advised that it is Columbia Machines.
Police finding three dead and another victim critically injured. The suspect fleeing the scene until police chased him down.
Gunshots were exchanged between the suspect and the trooper. Both were injured and transported for medical treatment.
There has, Lindsay. Threats investigated against federal judges, prosecutors, and courthouses nearly quadrupled in the last four years. Roski, if convicted, faces up to 20 years in prison. Lindsay?
All right, Pierre, thank you. And we pivot now to that horrific mass shooting in Uvalde, where more details on the moments of terror experienced by those students come out just a day after those heart-wrenching and devastating Capitol Hill testimonies. ABC's Maria Villarreal brings us this report.
Tonight, chilling new details about the police response to the killing spree at Robb Elementary. A preliminary assessment indicating the decision to delay entry into the Robb Elementary School classroom was made in order to allow protective gear to arrive on scene, according to ABC sources.
Are we able to, is anybody inside of the building? I'm telling you, he is in a room full of victims, full of victims at this moment.
Officers waiting for protective gear contradicts active shooter protocols that have been adopted by law enforcement agencies across the country in the last 20 years. Chief Pete Arredondo seemed to know people were going to ask questions, overheard saying, "People are going to ask why we're taking so long." According to the New York Times, two Uvalde police officers, a lieutenant and sergeant, were shot trying to look inside classroom doors. An official telling ABC News, Arredondo allegedly held back from confronting the suspect, concerned about how long it was taking to get safety shields to officers inside and backing off. The Times article indicating more than a dozen of the 33 children and three teachers originally in the two classrooms remained alive during the 1 hour and 17 minutes from when the rampage began to when officers officially entered. Uvalde's school district superintendent silent for nearly two weeks, speaking briefly today, refusing to answer questions about the investigation and job status of Chief Pete Arredondo.
We have, in our security walks, worked with an outside agency to collect information and put that information together as a working list. So we are currently working with an outside agency at this point.
Was there an agency in place before the incident happened?
We have worked with an architectural firm. I wouldn't really call it specifically for safety and security, but we have worked with an architectural firm that is part of what we look at.
Maria Villarreal joins us now. And Maria, there's also a state congressional review happening in Austin, where you are today. What came out of that?
You know, as of right now, the committee does not want to release any substantial information. They are concerned about a lot of misinformation that has been coming out of this particular investigation. So what we can tell you right now is that DPS was behind closed doors for most of the day with this committee. We understand they were reviewing things like 911 calls, dispatch audio, and body cam video, but they will be back next week, probably on Monday, to talk with more witnesses and to bring in more evidence. And again, this is a congressional review. Really, they're hoping to learn what missteps, if any, were happened while they were out there responding to this shooting so that they can share this with other agencies around the state. Lindsay?
All right, Maria Villarreal, our thanks to you as always. Grand Rapids, Michigan, police officer is charged with second-degree murder for killing 26-year-old Patrick Leoya after a traffic stop back in April. ABC's Alex Perez is in Grand Rapids with more.
Tonight, the Michigan police officer captured on camera fatally shooting Patrick Leoya, charged with murder.
Taking a look at everything that I reviewed in this case, I believe there's a sufficient basis to proceed on a single count of second-degree murder, and that charge has been filed.
The charge against Grand Rapids Officer Christopher Schur comes after a two-month-long investigation, Schur turning himself into authorities.
Stay in the car. Stay in the car.
The ordeal unfolding back on April 4th. Video shows Schur pulling over 26-year-old Leoya for a license plate issue.
The plate doesn't belong on this car.
Leoya, when asked for a driver's license, shuts the car door and begins to walk away.
No, no, no. Stop, stop. Put your hands up.
When Schur tries to detain him, Leoya takes off running. They then struggle over the stun gun as Schur deploys it. Schur, now on top of Leoya, pulls out his gun and fires, appearing to shoot Leoya in the back of the head. Since the incident, protesters taking to the streets several times demanding justice. Tonight, Leoya's family, who immigrated to the United States after escaping violence in the Democratic Republic of Congo, saying they won't give up until the officer is convicted.
Don't get tired, don't give up, because the fight is still hard and ahead of us. Don't give up, just keep fighting.
The family feels they've gotten some semblance of justice at this point. Alex Perez joins us now. Alex, what comes next in this case?
Yeah, Lindsay, so Schur will be arraigned tomorrow. The police union defending his actions, saying that an officer has a right to protect themselves. The police chief here says he will recommend to the city manager that Schur be fired. Lindsay?
All right, Alex Perez, our thanks to you. And when we come back, the unbelievable twist in a decades-old cold case, the infant found alive 41 years later. An update on that tragic Osprey crash that claimed the lives of several military service members. But up next, the ABC News exclusive, the family of a college student who suffered a devastating brain injury during her pledgement is speaking out as we get a look at surveillance from that night.
With so much at stake, so much on the line, more Americans turn here than any place else. ABC News World News Tonight with David Muir, America's number-one most-watched newscast, now streaming on ABC News Live.
This is ABC News Live.
The crushing families here in Poland.
At refugee centers.
In Putin's Russia.
On the ground in Ukraine.
Close to the front line.
Here at the White House.
Destructive. Cat 4 storm. You're along I-5.
Boston is in the bullseye.
Let's go. We made it.
ABC News Live, America's number-one streaming news, anytime, anywhere, streaming 24/7, straight to you for free.
Thank you for making ABC News Live America's number-one streaming news.
Admit it, these days, what you need to know.
Seems to change just about every day.
What is it that you really want to know, need to know?
To help you not just get through your day.
But to make the most of it. Feel smarter.
Feel better.
Feel happier.
Well, how about a third hour of Good Morning America?
GMA 3, What You Need to Know, now streaming on ABC News Live. It's all about you. The hottest news in daytime are happening right here.
We talk about things on this show that people don't talk about.
That I can't wait to see.
Honest takes from strong women.
We need all hands on deck, and we need it right now.
This is the time to speak out.
Unafraid to get real.
We stick by our points of view.
We're all seeing it differently, and that's the beauty of The View.
And that's why the most-watched, number-one daytime talk show is The View, now streaming on ABC News Live.
Is that the gun?
That's not the gun.
What is it? I won't ask you again, then.
Are you an IT?
The deeper you go into the black market.
You could be putting your life at risk.
The darker it gets.
Why hasn't anyone come out and spoken?
About the money, that's what I'm doing.
Traffic, new episodes Wednesdays at 9:00 on National Geographic.
Take America's number-one news with you, anywhere you go, anytime, free. Download the ABC News app now. Breaking news, exclusives, 24/7, there for you with one touch. The ABC News app, download it now. America's number-one news, ABC News. Most watched, most trusted, and streaming live to you, anytime, anywhere, and free. This is ABC News Live, America's number-one streaming news, free to you 24/7. Watch America's number-one news whenever you want it, wherever you are, anytime. ABC News Live, streaming live and free on all platforms.
Ukraine President Zelensky is sounding the alarm over Russian forces continuing to take up more of their territory. He says the fight for just one city could seal the fate of the entire hotly contested Donbass region. Russia is accused of indiscriminate bombing of civilian areas. Ukraine says it's losing about 100 soldiers a day with 500 injured, and unlike Russia, they are not able to sustain those numbers for very long. Next to the family of a University of Missouri student who suffered a devastating brain injury after allegedly being pressured to drink a bottle of vodka during a fraternity pledge party. They're now speaking to ABC News as we get a first look at the surveillance video from that tragic night when the 18-year-old nearly lost his life.
Danny was always a good kid. He was happy.
A plea from a family desperate to make sure no one else experiences their pain after their son and brother Danny Santulli nearly died while pledging a fraternity at the University of Missouri.
I saw Danny in the medical ICU at the hospital up in the zoo, and it's just, it's just a bunch of tubes everywhere, and that's an image that will probably never leave my head.
Now, for the first time, the public seeing surveillance footage from inside the Phi Gamma Delta Fraternity House on the night of October 19th. Shortly after 9:00 p.m., pledges can be seen blindfolded and led downstairs for a ritual known as Pledge Dad Reveal Night. According to the family's civil lawsuit that was recently settled against 23 defendants, Danny, an 18-year-old freshman, was pressured to drink an entire bottle of vodka.
They were given their family bottle of alcohol, and then they drank from it, and they took them upstairs, and for the next two hours, they drank and drank and drank. We see one of the fraternity members putting a tube in Danny's mouth with a funnel at the other end and pouring beer down his throat while Danny is in the middle of consuming an entire bottle of vodka. That's on the video.
Just before 11:00 p.m., Danny can be seen losing his balance and falling backwards. Other fraternity members carry him out of the room, pick him up, and drop him onto a sofa. Around 12:30 a.m., Danny, alone on the sofa, begins to slip onto the floor. As the minutes tick by, he struggles to move, then lies still. After 15 minutes, another fraternity member finds him on the floor, unresponsive, then lifts Danny back onto the sofa. Other brothers come into the room. One picks Danny up and carries him toward the door, dropping him on the floor. Then outside, fraternity members carry Danny to a car and drive him to the University of Missouri Hospital.
Just the fact that nobody, they knew he was in distress, and his lips were blue, and nobody called 911. It's like, I don't know. I mean, a six-year-old calls 911.
When Danny arrived at the hospital, he was in cardiac arrest and not breathing. His blood alcohol level a near-lethal .486. After six weeks in the ICU, Danny was moved to a rehab hospital in Colorado. Now, more than seven months later, he's back home in Minnesota with his family.
What do the doctors tell you about Danny?
That he'll need care for life. He's still not talking or walking. He's in a wheelchair. He lost his vision. But he hears us, and he knows we're there. And we'll just keep fighting, and we're not gonna give up hope.
We will get through it. We will get through it.
The University of Missouri has since revoked the fraternity's charter and proposed sanctions against 13 of its members. Prosecutors have charged one fraternity member with two misdemeanors for supplying alcohol to a minor, but the family says that's not enough.
Your family believes that Danny was hazed? Oh, 100%.
Yes.
It makes me sick to my stomach seeing the people involved that harmed Danny walking around campus, acting like they did nothing wrong.
I do personally want to see specific kids get felony Ds. That's gonna wake them up. A misdemeanor is not gonna wake them up.
Missouri has what I would call a rather typical hazing statute, and the conduct that occurred that night at Pledge Dad Reveal Night is textbook hazing.
The prosecutor's office saying their investigation is ongoing and, if appropriate, will file additional charges. Danny's mom, Mary Pat, is now his full-time caregiver. His family focusing on celebrating Danny's progress day by day.
At the end of the day, it's still Danny, still looks like Danny, and we're gonna love Danny forever, and we'll always be by his side, no matter what.
Our thanks to Will Reeve for that. Still ahead here on Prime, an update on the effort to end the baby formula shortages nationwide. The suspensions of several major golfers from the PGA, like Phil Mickelson, will explain. And with the House Committee investigating the January 6th attack on the Capitol, we'll take a look at their inquiry by the numbers. But first, our tweet of the day from Member of Congress, Jai Paul, remembering where she was on January 6th.
The deeper you go into the black market, the darker it gets.
the darker it gets.
Traffic, Wednesdays at 9:00 on National Geographic.
Right now, with so much at stake, Sunday mornings, this is the place. Taking on all the tough questions, straightforward reporting, no spin, no hype, no bull. Thank you for making ABC News this week with George Stephanopoulos, the number-one Sunday morning news show versus the competition.
Welcome to this week.
This is ABC News Live.
The crushing families here in Poland.
At refugee centers.
In Putin's Russia.
On the ground in Ukraine.
Close to the front line.
Here at the White House.
Destructive.
Cat four storm.
You're along I-5.
Boston is in the bullseye.
Let's go.
We made it.
ABC News Live, America's number one streaming news, anytime, anywhere, streaming 24/7, straight to you for free.
Thank you for making ABC News Live America's number one streaming news.
Is that the gun?
That's not the gun.
What is it? I won't ask you again, then. Are you an IT?
The deeper you go into the black market.
You could be putting your life at risk.
The darker it gets.
Why hasn't anyone come out and spoken?
About the money, that's what I'm doing.
Traffic, new episodes Wednesdays at 9:00 on National Geographic.
These days, with so much going on, it's hard to keep up.
While others are recapping yesterday's headlines, we're bringing you the right now.
This is the busy border crossing.
Steel barricades, another strike.
The Right Now look at the day ahead, how it affects you and your family.
Record-high gas prices.
The threat of cyber warfare.
Is peace possible?
World News Now, beginning at 2:00 AM Eastern, followed by America This Morning, America's number one early morning news, streaming here on ABC News Live.
Take America's number one news with you, anywhere you go, anytime, free. Download the ABC News app now. Breaking news, exclusives, 24/7, there for you with one touch. The ABC News app, download it now.
As of today, in a big way, we have inaugurated abcnews.com.
A lot has changed in our world since Peter made that announcement. But what hasn't changed is the commitment to groundbreaking reporting and innovation at abcnews.com. And here's to everything ahead.
Welcome back, everyone. After nearly a year of closed-door interviews and secretive work, the House committee investigating the January 6th attack on the Capitol will go public tonight. Here's where their inquiries stand so far by the numbers. More than 1,000 interviews and depositions have been conducted by investigators for the committee, and more are still planned. They've received nearly 140,000 documents and are following up on more than 472 tips. 14,000 hours of security camera footage were provided by Capitol Police. At least 816 people are accused of taking part in the attack. And the FBI is still seeking another 350 people they believe committed violent acts on Capitol grounds. 85 are from Florida, making it the state with the most accused rioters. Texas and Pennsylvania both had 69 accused. So far, more than 255 people have been charged with assaulting, resisting, or impeding officers. And 85 are charged with using a deadly weapon or seriously injuring an officer. At least 297 rioters have already pled guilty. 60 of them face felony charges. 162 rioters have been sentenced. 48% of them received jail time. The longest sentence so far, five years. Four former Trump administration officials have been held in contempt for refusing to comply with subpoenas to testify before the committee. Some of those never-seen-before videos, documents, and images are expected to be presented in tonight's hearing. And we still have lots to get to here on Prime tonight. Our conversation with the groundbreaking newest Marvel superhero. And our January 6th coverage as we get closer to those hearings are also about to start ramping up. But first, a look at our top trending stories on abcnews.com.
With so much at stake in our world right now, we wanted to thank you for your trust and for making ABC News America's number one news.
And thank you for making ABC News Live America's number one streaming news.
Now streaming on ABC News Live. 2020 true crime, cinematic, real-life drama, stunning, the unthinkable. Follow the clues, the hunt, true crime. 2020, now streaming on ABC News Live.
National parks are incredibly safe places. A prime will happen.
Hey, my wife. My wife is home. She's in really critical condition.
At that time, I thought it was just a tragic accident.
There's still a lot of questions we need to ask.
There were small things that didn't totally add up.
This is two lives for Harold that have died now.
I was shocked. Something's not right.
Admit it, these days, what you need to know
seems to change just about every day.
What is it that you really want to know, need to know?
To help you not just get through your day.
But to make the most of it. Feel smarter.
Feel better.
Feel happier.
Well, how about a third hour of Good Morning America?
GMA 3, What You Need to Know, now streaming on ABC News Live.
It's all about you.
I know what happened, and I'm not guilty.
Why the fascination with criminal trials? Figure out what's really out there.
She revealed she had murdered his family.
I know in my heart they did this.
It's the time of suspicion.
The ending's really tough.
You don't know whether truth is going to be difficult to find unless you try to find it.
America's number one news, ABC News. Most watched, most trusted, and streaming live to you anytime, anywhere, and free. This is ABC News Live, America's number one streaming news, free to you 24/7. Watch America's number one news whenever you want it, wherever you are, anytime. ABC News Live, streaming live and free on all platforms.
After almost a year's worth of compiling evidence from over 1,000 closed-door interviews and 100,000 documents, the House Select Committee investigating the January 6th attack on the Capitol is now ready to show its work. The committee says it has hours of never-before-seen footage of that deadly day, including live witnesses and videotaped testimony from Donald Trump's daughter Ivanka and her husband Jared Kushner, who both had senior roles in his administration. Also being shown, new footage from documentary filmmaker Nick Quested, who was embedded with the Proud Boys before and during the violent insurrection. The committee's goal, to document the horror of that day and highlight what they claim is former President Trump's failure to do anything to stop it. Instead, the group alleges for months Trump laid the groundwork for the attack by repeatedly spreading baseless lies that the 2020 presidential election was stolen from him.
Its air station, Miramar, has confirmed five Marines died onboard an Osprey aircraft that crashed yesterday. It happened during a training mission. An investigation into the cause is now underway.
A Marine Corps official confirms the downed aircraft was an Osprey based at Marine Corps Air Base Yuma. That is the aircraft that can fly like an airplane but can also take off and land vertically like a helicopter. The area where it crashed is in a remote part of California, not far from the Mexican border.
As the federal government works to ease the nationwide baby formula shortage, ABC News has learned that a whistleblower complaint involving Abbott's infant formula plant in Sturgis, Michigan, was filed with OSHA back in February of 2021. It alleged major quality control and contamination concerns at that facility. The plant wasn't shut down until February of this year, triggering a break in the supply chain with families desperately trying to find formula but being confronted with empty store shelves. An Abbott spokesperson telling ABC News they did investigate at the time and have not been able to confirm the allegations. According to the White House, the U.S. has so far secured a total of more than 127 million bottles worth of formula for import.
More Americans applied for John Bledsoe last week, but the total number of Americans collecting unemployment remains at a five-decade low. Applications for unemployment benefits rose by 27,000 to 229,000 for the week ending June 4th.
The Labor Department says that's the highest number of applications since January. But the department also says the PGA Tour says more than a dozen golfers, including Phil Mickelson, taking part in a new Saudi-funded golf league, can no longer participate in PGA Tour events. The Saudi League is supported by an investment fund which is controlled by Crown Prince Mohammed bin Salman, who has been accused of several human rights violations. The players are taking part in the inaugural Live Golf Invitational outside of London, the first of eight scheduled events around the world. The winners will take home a $4 million prize. A big night for Britney Spears, a source close to the pop star and her longtime beau Sam Asghari confirming the couple was getting married today. The news comes less than a year after the "Baby One More Time" singer was released from her conservatorship after almost 14 years. The singer testifying at a hearing that she wanted to get married and have a baby. The couple announced their engagement in September. In April, Spears had announced she was pregnant with the couple's child but had lost the baby. This will be Spears' third marriage.
Tonight, Texas officials say the search for the baby of a couple killed more than 40 years ago is now over. Baby Holly disappeared in the fall of 1980 along with her parents after they moved from Texas to central Florida. Her parents' bodies were later discovered in a wooded area last October. Genealogists identified the couple through DNA, and the search for baby Holly then began. Two days ago, authorities met Holly in Oklahoma to reveal the truth about her biological parents. Her grandmother describes the moment she got the news.
June 7th, and they called us and found Holly. That night, I was able to go to bed and I slept all night, first time in 42 years.
Authorities say baby Holly was left in a church by two women belonging to a nomadic religious group. They now want the public's help in solving the murders of her parents. Our next guest went from a Marvel superhero fan to becoming Marvel's first Muslim superhero. Following the story of a teen who discovers her superpowers, Ms. Marvel, which premiered on Disney Plus yesterday, introduces audiences to a 16-year-old Pakistani-American from Jersey City named Kamala Khan, played by Iman Vellani. Let's take a look. And joining us now is the star of the series, Iman Vellani. Welcome to the show, Iman.
Thank you for having me.
So great to have you here. Now, I'm told that you were already a big fan of Marvel superheroes when they introduced Ms. Marvel, the first Muslim superhero. So what's it like now to see yourself represented?
It's weird because I honestly didn't know representation was something I wanted or something that was missing until I read those comics when I was 15. And I was like, oh, that's what I look like. Like, it felt so real and it felt like those comics were written about me and for me and only me. And that's how personal of a connection I felt. I, like, dressed up as her on Halloween and read every single issue I can get my hands on. And that's the only reason I auditioned. I just felt so close to the character. And it's weird. It's crazy that this is happening and now people are, like, putting my face to this character.
And do you hear that kind of excitement, enthusiasm as far as representation from kids who are Pakistani or Muslim?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it just, we've been showing the show in Toronto, which was my hometown. And the sheer, you know, amount of love that I've received and the response. Girls were, like, coming up to me crying, saying that this is the best representation they've gotten. I still feel like I'm just cosplaying on a larger scale. And, you know, I think that's kind of the appeal of the character, similar to Spider-Man, how anyone can be under the mask. This lightning bolt in this character means so much to so many people. And I'm just, like, lucky enough to share it with the fans.
And you've also said that you never planned to be an actress, right? That this was actually your first audition. What made you decide, well, maybe I'll go for it?
WhatsApp. My aunt sent me the casting call through a WhatsApp forward. And I was like, look, this is super sketchy. This is not how casting calls work, not that I know what they look like. And she was like, yeah, just do it. And I was like, okay, fine. And sent it, sent it my, like, self-tape and a very academic resume. And they sent back sides. And I knew exactly which scenes they were pulling it from, from the comics. And it was, like, super real. And then I sent in a self-tape. They called me to LA the next week. And then I was cast in June on, like, the last day of high school. So it's, uh, it just happened.
And Ms. Marvel, really, there's this whole idea that her culture and her life and her ethnicity are all intertwined. Give us some examples of that.
Yeah, I think the comics, for example, did a wonderful job in organically incorporating diversity so that it wasn't the main thing of the story because ultimately it is about a fanfic-writing, Avengers-loving nerd who just so happens to be Pakistani and Muslim. So we really wanted to make it normal and normalize the Muslim experience, if you will. And that's how it kind of was for me. It wasn't, you know, being Pakistani, being Muslim wasn't my entire personality. This is like, this is the time I wake up. This is the time I have breakfast. This is the time I pray. This is the time I go to school. Like, it was just a part of my schedule, like an extracurricular. And that's how we wanted to show it. We didn't want to glamorize religion or the culture or anything. We just wanted to show it as it is in real life. And so incorporating, like, little Pakistani words and, you know, showing stuff like Eid and having brown people on screen having fun. Like, how often do we get to see that in Marvel, of all things? It was, yeah, we really got to show what we wanted to.
And Ms. Marvel really is on a journey of discovery, of self-discovery. And Ms. Marvel really is on a journey of discovery, of self-discovery. Would you say that you learned anything about yourself while playing her?
100%. I think the parallels of me and Kamala are like absolutely insane. I think her getting the powers and me getting this part really went hand in hand. And growing up, I felt quite disconnected from my culture and I was very dismissive about me being Pakistani, me being brown in general. I thought it was very embarrassing, even though I like grew up with all four of my grandparents. I watched Bollywood movies when I was younger and listened to the songs. I just, I didn't see the value in it and I didn't think it was cool, quite frankly. And so I think because I was so obsessed with Hollywood and American pop culture and I never saw myself represented in that light, I just assumed that those things never went hand in hand. And if I wanted this, then I couldn't have, you know, where my roots. And now I'm in Hollywood and I'm working with like so many cool brown people and they're so in touch with their roots. And that just made me want to like reconnect with mine and I'm so lucky that, you know, people like Sanaa Manat, who co-created the character of Ms. Marvel, is our producer. And she's been really holding my hand throughout all this. Sharmeen Obet Chahnoi, who's a Pakistani filmmaker, and then she directed two episodes. They just have such a special connection to the source material and brought so much of themselves and that just inspired me to kind of do that as well.
If you could have any one of Ms. Marvel's superpowers, what would it be?
Okay, I'm a lazy person, so I would, I would say just the stretchiness of not having to get up and grabbing things.
The flexibility, that extra elastic. Iman, we so appreciate you coming and joining us tonight. Ms. Marvel is now streaming on Disney Plus. And now back to our top story, the hearing on the January 6th attack on the Capitol is scheduled to begin in about 15 minutes. Here's a live look at the floor of the U.S. Capitol where those seven Democrats and two Republicans will hold an unprecedented hearing before the American public. ABC's political director, Rick Klein, joins us now. Rick, House Democrats have really been playing up expectations for this hearing, saying that they have proof Trump's involvement included much more than just incitement. What's at stake for them? What do they really need to deliver tonight?
This is about connecting the dots from their perspective. Committee aides have said this is about an opening statement, trying to show people some of the evidence they've gathered, including some of the new material that we've been featuring already in our coverage here at ABC. And I think knitting together some of the testimony that we've heard from, and often haven't heard, from Trump associates, from information about extremist groups, information about financing. The challenge for this committee is to surprise people who may have already made up their minds one way or the other on January 6th, and I think also to show that this was not just an event in the past. A lot of talk that we're expecting tonight to be about the threat that exists right now to democracy, the threats moving forward, and what January 6th continues to mean, not just the horrors that it meant that day.
And as you know, the nine-member committee only includes two Republicans, Representatives Liz Cheney and Adam Kinzinger. Both of them are Trump critics. Back when the committee was being formed about a year ago, Minority Leader Kevin McCarthy withdrew his other nominations that at the time Republicans thought that they could paint the panel as partisan theatrics. How could that play out for them as this process goes public now?
Yeah, there was a big tit-for-tat around that. McCarthy opposed the creation of this committee. He named members, including some who were witnesses that the committee ultimately would want to talk to, people that voted against certification, people that were communicating with former President Trump in real time. Nancy Pelosi rejected those picks and rather than McCarthy allowing some of those picks and others to go forward, he withdrew entirely. And that left the door open for the two Republicans who were willing to serve. Both of them are, as you said, are really anti-Trump Republicans. Adam Kinzinger now not running for reelection and Liz Cheney being challenged in a primary by former President Trump. It definitely adds to the partisan tinge of this, but it is important to note that the Republicans opposed the idea of a bipartisan commission that had been floated earlier. It was blocked in the Senate, it was opposed by most Republicans, including McCarthy, who changed his own position on that. So they had an opportunity to do this in a bigger bipartisan fashion. The fact that this is mostly a partisan exercise, I don't think should take away from the evidence that's presented, but certainly it'll make it easier to portray this as just a lot of noise.
And we're also learning tonight that there will be people in attendance like the widow of the officer who died in the aftermath of the insurrection. Talk to us about some of the careful choreography really behind this hearing.
Yeah, look, this wasn't, this wasn't a movie. This wasn't some abstract thing that happened a long time ago. This was a real and terrible event, that people lost their lives, people are damaged psychologically, physically, for life because of what happened a year and a half ago. And there's a tendency, I think, in American public life to short attention span, we put everything down the memory hole. Bringing back those real and raw memories, the emotion of the video, I think, is critical and the emotion of the individuals. We remember the testimony of the officers that spoke in previous months in public testimony. We're going to hear from another officer that was on duty that day about her experience. We haven't heard from her before. We have to remember how people were impacted by this, what this attack meant. This was a violent assault on the Capitol. And again, it wasn't just a one-off. The committee is going to show, or intends to show, how this was part of a broader effort to overthrow the election.
We just saw one of those Capitol Police officers just take his seat there in the room. Of course, we're in the middle of midterm elections around the country, primary season. Is this hearing likely to really move the needle for either of the party's candidates?
I haven't talked to many people in either party who thinks that it will. I'll tell you that there's some thought among Democrats that this is important. And maybe the most important political aspect is in framing the choice rather than the referendum. That's how Democrats want to think about this. They want to remind people, this is something that happened when a certain former president was in power. This is something that might happen again if Republicans take over the House of Representatives. But in terms of reaching people where they live their lives, the events of last January 6th are not likely to be top of mind in the coming months.
We talked to a lawmaker out of New Mexico within the past week and she said that her constituents, the only six that they're worried about is the $6 a gallon gas, that they've really moved forward beyond this at this point. The White House, in the meantime, has remained fairly quiet about expectations for tonight's hearing. Why do you think that is?
I've talked to people at the White House about this. They view the president's job as going out there and making the case that the economy is better than people realize, showing that he's working for the American people on big priorities around the economy and also things like abortion rights, things like the gun control debate that's happening in the country, side by side, all of these things. They're watching this intensely. We know that President Biden himself has said that this is an important moment, an important exercise, but they're not expecting the president to run a lot of color commentary. They want those events and this evidence to speak for itself.
And before I let you go, Rick, just curious, what's the end game? What for, for the Democrats, we should say, and also for the committee members, where could this possibly lead?
There's three things that happen after the public testimony. One is a final report and finally, out of that, maybe legislative recommendations. Are there things that should change in the law? Are there things that should be tweaked in terms of the vulnerabilities that were shown here that might be an argument out of this? The other thing that happens potentially is a criminal referral to the Department of Justice for any number of individuals, maybe still up to, including former President Trump. Those are decisions for the Department of Justice. And then finally, as you referenced, the midterm elections, how does this get put through the system of politics? What are the takeaways that voters have? That is one of the major missions of this committee, of course.
All right, Rick Klein, our thanks to you. And joining us now is Khan Nawadegh, former federal prosecutor for the Southern District of New York. So Khan, what are you most interested in hearing about tonight?
What I'm interested in hearing about is what everyone's been saying, what's new, right? What's the new evidence that the committee has said they're going to roll out and share with the American public? And then secondly, what's the quality of that evidence? Is it going to hit us in the gut, right? Is it going to grab our attention and tell us, pay attention to this, this is important?
Why is this not something that just we allow the Department of Justice to handle?
And the reason for that is there needs to be a public vetting of this. The Department of Justice is held to different standards, right? They're not going to do it in a public sphere. And for something like this that really affected the nation, I think there should be a public vetting.
Long-term, are you thinking this potentially could lead to charges for former President Trump?
It could, but if it hasn't happened already, what's the likelihood that it will? I don't think this is going to necessarily move the needle insofar as what the Department of Justice does. I don't think they're going to be under that kind of pressure based on what the committee does in these hearings.
There are some people who say that this is just political theater, really. Do you feel that way or do you feel that this is very necessary?
I think it's very necessary. I think it's important for the public to hear what happened, to know that it was important and to pay attention to it, or else it could happen again.
And why do this over a series of nights? Why not just do one big night or two nights back to back? Why prolong this over several weeks?
I think it's probably because of the nature of what the committee has to present. They couldn't get it done in one night. I agree with you, though, the first night's probably going to be the most important night.
How delicate is this hearing when you're talking about the precedent, really, that you're setting with regard to this kind of examination and interrogation by extension into a former president of the United States?
I think typically it would be something delicate that you would dance around, but because of the nature of what had happened, because of the violence that happened that day, I don't think the committee is going to pull any punches here.
What kind of evidence do you, are you expecting to see and do you feel really might change the dynamics?
I think I would focus on the new testimony that is purportedly going to be presented. If there are people close to the former president's inner circle, that'll be important. And again, the quality of what these people are saying, how strong is that evidence? How compelling is it?
Why do you think that this has taken so long? I mean, obviously, we know that they've had to pour through hours, thousands of hours of surveillance video and all of the people that they've had questioned and interrogated, really, over all of this. But why the year?
I'm actually surprised they were able to do it this quickly. I think with something as vast and complex with the number of witnesses, I would have expected this would have taken longer. There are cases I've worked on that have taken longer than this, they're much smaller.
Who would you say are the key players? Is there anyone in particular? Does Ivanka Trump do it for you in particular tonight? Is there someone who you're saying what they have to say could really be a bombshell?
I think anybody who's really close to the former president and who has some significant information. So Ivanka is one person, Jared Kushner is another person. Those are the people you want to, I think, focus on and listen to.
And what kind of charges? Because people are saying, many Democrats are suggesting anyway, that what they have found really pushes beyond the envelope of just the President Trump, the former president incited a riot, that they're saying that he could have, he could be responsible for more. What kind of charges could we see?
I think the most likely charge, if there is one out there, is basically trying to obstruct an official proceeding. That's the charge that the committee kind of presented in that California case to try to compel Eastman to produce documents.
All right, Khan Nawadegh, you are going to be with us tonight as we watch. We thank you so much for your time and insight. And before we go tonight, our image of the day, take another live look in just a moment, an unprecedented hearing in our shared history will begin, the assault on the Capitol and the month-long investigation will begin to be revealed to the public. And that is our show for this hour. Up next, David Muir and our powerhouse team will pick up on our January 6th coverage. Stay tuned to ABC News Live for more context and analysis of the day's top stories. Thanks so much for streaming with us.